Six thirty-one, I'll call the meeting to order. The Ashland School Board regular meeting Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand nineteen. And the first order of business is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call men, you know, three members present and one is absent with notice. Thing we have is, next item is minutes from the regular meeting up June fourth. Everybody have an opportunity to look at those?
Yes, I did.
Want to make a motion to accept?
I will.
Sandra? Steve, Steve is the second. Think there'll be a lot of that tonight.
I think so too.
All in favor? Three zero, thank you. Privilege on the floor, number one, agenda items only, is there anything from the floor? Seeing nothing, we'll move on, thank you. Communications, audit report, end of the year, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, Mary?
So you have the audit report in your packet, it's attachment two. There are no, no findings other than indications that we are following proper procedures and practices. And, you know, certainly if you have any specific questions, I will certainly do my best to answer them or to get back to you with responses.
Any questions for her tonight? No, so if you have to, or if you haven't run it through, you can see something, just email her.
And I do want to commend the business office, you know, it really is there with attention to detail and all the work, Assistant Superintendent, Temperina, Mrs. Temperina. You know, it really, and certainly the audit process is, is a time consuming one, but an important one and one that we value, and so, just really do want to commend their, their efforts.
Yeah, they do a great job. Next item is notice of name change and retirement of Stephen E.
Greslick.
Greslick, thank you.
So the, just the company that we have used for the audit, it will have a name changed relative to that retirement, and it is the partner who's been involved, so it's Robarge and Company, I believe is how you pronounce it, will be the new name that we will be referring to in the future.
Same company, just a different name.
Yes.
Thank you. And then in your packet also, we have a note from the Ashland Teachers Association for the luncheon that we put on for, for Teacher Appreciation Week. Everybody saw that. And we appreciate the note, in fact, the Teachers Association. Next item is administrative reports, principals' report, and enrollment. Hasn't changed yet.
Well, actually, you're gonna be surprised.
Oh, one sixty-two, is it less or more?
Have to wait and see.
Okay, alright, I'll wait.
So when I was looking at last year's report that I did at this time, I realized, looking at total enrollment, we started the year last year with one forty-three, and this year on the books right now, we have a hundred and seventy-one. So that's a lot, a lot more. We have currently twenty-one kindergarten students enrolled with one pending. So yeah, we're very solid, our numbers have gone up and up over the course of the year, so that's exciting. We just ended our summer blast program, we had, on a slow day, twenty attendees, sometimes more, depending on what was going on with Park and Rec, we tried to plan around them so that kids don't miss their, the trip days when they do field trips, and we also provide transportation for students, so we are dropping them off at the beach certain days if they're in the Park and Rec program, and that's been really helpful, it's definitely made our numbers go way up in summer, summer blast. Mr. Jones and Mrs. Paul did a fantastic job of doing great, neat projects with the kids and just keeping them active and interested and engaged in learning over the summer. So that was another great year for the, the summer blast program. If you look around, you can see how shiny our floors are, you know, as always, our custodial staff is working like crazy to get everything ready for the start of the school year. We will be well ready for day one, and we're really excited for that. We still need to hire one special, special education pair of professionals. I'm in the process of planning our teacher workshop days, which is kind of a balance between the mandatory things that we have to do, the required refreshers, some new trainings, classroom prep, theme planning, some curriculum time and professional collaboration and team building. First day of school is the twenty-sixth, our open house is the following Thursday, that's September fifth. I'm sorry it's on a Thursday?
I don't know, Shannon, you, you know, you say this about these Thursdays, you apologize, but.
I know, do you know why we do everything on Thursday? Because when we have.
I thought you were gonna say it was because I work.
No. When we have these Thursday, when we have these evening events, and we, we do them on Thursday night, because they're really, really long events, makes a long day for teachers, and so if they have four days to get through after a night that they're here until eight o'clock, it's much harder than if it's one day, they can hold on for one day, be a little tired, and it's still okay. It's not intentional, I promise.
Six years I have had this program, August thirteenth, six years, every Thursday, I have not missed one Thursday for my day away program.
I think they should change the program, do a different day.
I think I'll see you after school.
Alright, fine. Our theme for the coming year, and this is a big one, we're really excited about it, we are focusing on raising the level of attendance at school, making attendance a really important and constant part of our school year. The importance of kids being here, raising the, just the attention to that, we're gonna be recognizing, recognizing students for their attendance throughout the course of the year, we have several different events planned, some surprises for the first day of school, and it's all based around, we need you here, we want you here, don't miss a minute of this awesome school year, so I think you'll be excited to see some of the things that we do and things that will be on display throughout the school. You'd be able to take a walk through it anytime and see some of those great kind of visuals that we're gonna use to help kids and parents just really be mindful of that it's important to be in school. So that's our theme for the year, we're really excited about it, and that's it.
I just have a question, with that number of students, are we gonna, are they sprinkled out throughout, or is it gonna hit?
No, we actually ended the year really high, so we've only had, you know, a very small trickle with transfer requests and a very small trickle with transferring in. So we haven't even kind of hit that, and maybe we won't, maybe we'll kind of stay status quo, but, so our numbers as they rose over the course of the year, those kids are already accounted for on our rosters anyway.
And were distributed throughout.
We had a little bit of a bubble, several of the students that came in over the course of the year were second, happened to be second graders, but other than that, it's been, you know, wanted to here and there, just a slow process.
Thank you. Next item is summer projects, Shannon and Tim?
So I have a list of the summer projects that have been, either been on our radar for a while or have been, in the process of happening or happening exclusively this summer. Mr. Pocat's here to answer whatever questions you have, so I'll just go through the list with you. We had to test our faucets for lead, so we've done all that, we had to retest a few of the faucets, and so after that second round of testing, we've gotten the all clear for all of our faucets, which is great. Our safety film on our windows, the person that is putting those in has been coming for six weeks and working on that little by little, he was here, in fact, today for six or seven hours, so he's got four more rooms left to do, and he will be all done. So we have told him that we want the, them all done before the school year starts, and that's what we're working toward. That is the safety film that goes over the glass that makes the glass not shatter and, and fall apart if it's struck with anything. We've had the, some projects completed, the rear gym door exterior lights were put in, the court side window demo down in the gym, and the new window prep is completed, the gym front and side windows, the entrance windows, and the stairway windows are all completed. The sledge removal in the oil tank was completed, the chimney rebuild will happen on the nineteenth of August. The boiler project with Irving is going to happen, the week before they're gonna remove the boilers, and then they'll be in that, the nineteenth of August to install the new boilers and systems. When we had that leak earlier, the expansion tank had to be replaced, that has been done. We have security, I'm sorry that I'm skipping around, we have security, a security gate being put in by Superior Fence, that, they're coming on the sixteenth to do that. Mr. Pocat, do you want to talk about the gym floor?
Sure. So as you know, we have the issue with the gym floor, I spoke to Tim Crowley today. Originally, Dan Hur said it's going to be at least half of the floor, if not all of it, depending on what they found. He met with Dan Hur again last week. Having that discussion with Dan Hur, Tim is gonna recommend a Primex that we just replace the entire floor. It's less than five thousand dollars difference between doing piecemeal work and replacing it, so that's just gonna be his recommendation, because he still doesn't know what he's gonna find once he rips it up, so they may have to replace the entire thing anyways. We still don't have an exact date from Dan Hur, because this wasn't on their radar. Right now, they're just saying September, so we don't know if that's the beginning of September, end of September. They are gonna, they're not gonna replace the entire stage, because some of that was damaged, probably talking four or five feet back from the edge, so that's not gonna be a total redone floor there, so. But they are going to resand the entire stage area and refinish it, so. That's basically what we have going on with that right now. So it's, it's not great for volleyball season, but there's really not much we can do about it, so.
So it should be all done probably mid to late October, because even if they start on September, it's still a fair.
That's, that's the, the last time, not, not yesterday, but previously when I spoke to Tim, there was discussion, maybe they might just come in and demo it in August, and I told Tim that was fine, because we don't want any kids on it anyways, with the floor heaved up, we don't want any injuries down there, so I said if they can come in and demo it and get it out of there, that's fine, that's not gonna hurt us any.
Yep.
That's where we stand with that.
Do you want to talk about Grand State and the court side windows?
Yes, as Shannon said, the demo and the framing is all done. As of yesterday, Grand State still had not received the court side windows, they were due beginning of August. I contacted the gentleman from Grand State again today, just to see if he had heard anything, he was gonna have to contact the window company. He did not respond to me today, he's been out on the road, working with his crew, so really don't have a further update from that. Luckily, we don't have the timeframe where they have to squeeze it in all of a sudden, because before, we were gonna have to refinish the door. Now we can kind of push it back a little bit, so it's, I still want to get it done within the next couple of weeks, but it's not a huge hurry right now, so.
All the other work around?
Yep, everything is done, the doors, windows, that's all been completed, so. We had, have another contractor come in and reframe for the new windows, that, we can three days to do that, so. Now Grand State comes in, all I have to do is cut the, the exterior siding, put the windows up, they should have that done within a couple of days, they do move pretty quickly.
Yep, it'll look good.
We've had, the gym locker room toilets are all replaced, cafeteria and sound system and projection system are all here. We are doing some painting in the cafeteria before those are put up and installed. We ordered new cafeteria tables, they are backordered, they were ordered on the twenty-fourth of July. I don't know, nothing that they've sent me or communicated has given me a, a date that we should expect those tables, but I'm hoping it's still at the beginning of the school year or close to that. The playground install is supposed to begin this week, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they did, they did move a job, they were going to do a job in Manchester and then our job afterwards, but the gentleman was kind enough to switch jobs for us, because it's just a public park down there, he's like, I need to get the school done first, so he's going to work through the weekend, and it should be done by Monday, so.
That's awesome. It's good that that worked out.
Kids are going to be just out of their minds when they see it, they really are. It's gonna be great.
So under facilities, I think we also wanted to, Mr. Pocat had a conversation, I think, with the town about potentially the discussion of a memorandum of understanding.
Yes.
Do you want to share? My understanding is we have borrowed some equipment.
Yes, so I've had a working relationship with the Public Works Director, you know, I've, I have experience running that equipment, I did it for twenty years, so I've used it for snow removal up here, I used it the other day to move some lumber that we had delivered. There's been a concern of the liability side of it by me doing that, we've since checked on that, because I'm still a town employee with the fire department, there's really no question of that. Technically. So, but what they did recommend was that we do a memorandum of understanding, just that if anything were to happen, liability wise, you know, we would cover any deductible. So I spoke to Charlie Smith, the town manager, yesterday, he's already spoke to the town's attorney, she said that, yeah, we can just draw something up real quick, we just needed to set some guidelines with it, like what my expectations were, and I told him I had no expectations, I don't expect to be able to use the equipment, it's only if it's available, I don't, it's nothing that I want, you know, I have to have, it's just, it's a convenience for me and for the school, and it saves us a little bit of money by me doing that, we don't have to hire it out. So they're gonna draw something up, and then I will give it to the board to look over, and you can do with it as you will.
But that is always, you know, I think it's wonderful when towns and schools work together. It really does service the community as a whole well, so we'll, we will review that once Mr. Pocat receives that, and then we'll bring that forward in a future meeting.
It's not different than us giving the memorandum of understanding for the fireworks to shoot off the property, so. It's just a back and forth, but at least we have something in writing, so both parties understand their responsibilities.
And both entities do use the same insurance company, so that is helpful, we'll run it by them as well.
Cool, awesome.
I also wanted to add, I'm sorry that I didn't have this originally, but I met our new Cafe Services food director today, and he's wonderful, I'm really excited, they, they're still looking for an assistant for him, but he came in and toured the school, I took him all around, got in the kitchen, so we're planning our, the staff breakfast and everything, and he's got some great ideas about getting to know the kids and find out what they want out of the lunch program and stuff, so I'm really excited to just have, just a different opportunity to, to look at our, what we're serving kids and how healthy they're eating, so.
Awesome, anything else on the list, or any hangups that were perceived?
No, I mean, everything right now is, is on schedule as far as what the other companies have, you know, said they would do, so, I mean, the only, the window film has just been slow going, but everything else has moved along pretty well, and it hasn't had too many problems this summer, so that's been a good thing.
And the gym bathroom exhaust fan installation, that's work in progress?
That's, yeah, that's all with the, the electric, our electrician. I did, the contractor originally was gonna do the window framing, he is still planning on trying to do the drop ceiling, I did discuss that with him today, so, once that's done, then we can work, you know, finish the electrical part of it, get the, this, the ceiling fans in and.
Gotta do the ceiling first, right?
Yeah, yeah, so. That, that is also moving forward.
Awesome. Anything else on that, Shannon, that we missed?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Pocat for, you know, being able to juggle all of the different things, I mean, big, big projects being done this summer, and a lot of planning and prep have gone in, and, you know, we have to work hard to keep contact with these, all of these, you know, tradesmen and, and vendors and stuff, and he's just done a great job, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of balls in here.
So many.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Next one is hiring update, Mary?
So I think Dr. Bartlett mentioned, we are still looking for special education pair educators, and that is the only opening that we have at this time.
Next item is business of the board. Appointment of a new school board member, Mary?
So you do have, certainly the board could decide to go into non-public for conversation, but we did have our interest expressed by Mr. Lofer to, to take the open seat that is on the school board, and I did include that in your backup materials for the board.
You didn't want a non-public? I feel that if you don't, I don't personally. You'd like to make a motion to nominate, Steve? Second?
I'll second that.
Sandra? All in favor? Three zero, thank you. You'll reach out to Jamie and let me know.
We will certainly do that.
You can get sworn in for next month's meeting. We're gonna have another month after that, where Steve won't be here. So.
October.
Yep, and budget's coming right up.
Hard to believe, isn't it? One year into the next.
Yep. General operating expenses.
So you do have in your packet, I believe you do, the manifest two zero two zero and two zero zero two, and I can certainly entertain any questions you may have, I do have them here to be signed, and that's really a note for me to remember, I don't dare go back with them signed.
I do have a question on, on, what one is? It's attachment six.
Okay.
Yes, it is, two zero, on twenty-seven, seven, twenty, how many toilets were changed or installed or that were new?
Did you set, can you repeat the number again for me, please?
Oh, it's two seven seven two zero, that's the check number.
So Excel Mechanical Services?
Yes.
I believe it was in both locker rooms, so.
Well, it doesn't say both, does it?
Yeah, it was both.
Oh, was it both? Okay.
It was both locker rooms.
Was it?
Yeah. There's at least fours, maybe five in the boys, and I think there's four in the girls.
And we can certainly, if you'd like more information, we can follow up with Mr. Pocat and send you out just a, a note with the details further on that, that's helpful.
Can, and then there was also the water and control valves, they're not like a standard toilet, just the metering valve like a urinal was a couple hundred bucks a piece.
It doesn't reflect here though, you know, when it says, you know, as far as, you know, a toilet replacement, you know, five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars for one toilet is a little bit too much, you know?
It is the spaces, but I, I can get more information.
Well, and, you know, not to, you know, but I remember like eight months ago, you know, we, we wanted to change the toilet in the bottom of the church because of day away program on Thursday, and the church could not fund it, so we said, it'll come out of day away, so I went, I purchased two toilets, a volunteer and myself, forty minutes, we had toilets in, exchanged out, and I think it, the bill was two hundred and forty dollars for both toilets, and our time was free. So when I looked at toilet replacement for five thousand, and I said, and I got these two toilets, high rise, you know, yeah, and I said, I think I need to ask.
I think that also may be the work that was done to replace the, after the leak.
The boil, also.
Yeah, well, we'll pull that PO.
Pull that whole PO.
Alright.
Get you more details.
Sure.
Plus the old toilets are, I think had like a, a tenant setback, which is the old style with the very short front, and the new ones have the twelve inch, so there's, all the stuff has to get moved.
Yeah, you see where I was coming from, yeah.
That would look like a very expensive toilet.
Probably gold lined and.
And it was both boys and girls locker room.
Yes, and see, I had no way of.
And having a sense of that, and how much of it really is the, maybe building out some of the plumbing and things like that, so.
And, and I really feel that I would be, I mean, as if I didn't ask on.
We appreciate questions.
Toilet replacement and, you know.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, that's the purpose.
It's also gonna be a water saver too, because those old ones were probably eight to nine gallons per flush, because they were that old, and the new ones are gonna be the what, point six, one point two, depending on what's going on, so there should be significant water reduction down there with all those toilets as well.
That's the only question I had on them.
We'll get back.
On the manifest was, was that one.
So take a motion to approve the two manifests of two thousand twenty and two thousand two. Some who, Steve?
I'll second that.
Sandra? All in favor? Three zero, thank you. New business, data privacy, informational items, Mary?
Just wanted to make you aware that we did hear from a vendor that, which was about seven years ago. Pearson is the, kind of the parent company, and it's Ames Web was a assessment tool that we used, and they had a breach of their privacy, and relative to Ashland Elementary School, we only had names of students that were uploaded, and so their breach didn't include those names from seven years ago. There were no birthdates attached to it, no addresses.
No social security numbers.
That we're aware of. So what we did decide is we are going to send a letter to families that would have been impacted, they are alumni students, we do have that list, I think Shannon counted the list, it's about a hundred and forty families that would have been impacted, there's no recommendation to do anything, but, you know, I think we are just living in an age where this unfortunately is probably not the last time that I will be making you aware, but I think if we just take a stance of where aware, we try to make other people aware as well. You know, again, we are working very hard to ensure we have good practices in place, but, you know, you hear every day some, you know, major companies with some pretty significant technology departments find themselves impacted, it is, you know, it's harder and harder, I think, as a society to, to ensure that this never happens, but we do work hard to ensure that our practices are to the best standards that we can institute, and Mr. Brent does a, a great job of that, I am just really impressed with his, his ability to do that, and I just, I have a letter, this is the draft letter that we hope to get out, we, we do have to, it's quite a task, because we have a new student information system, so the information from seven years ago is in a different system. So Mr. Brent is gonna have to kind of get into that system, we had, you know, saved the data at that point, but he's gonna go in and, and try to isolate those addresses, so, you know, kind of, tonight is somewhat of a public notice about it, you know, it was seven years ago, it was Ames Web, it was an assessment tool. Again, they, the company contacted us in late July, this happened in November to them, that they had a data breach, and that, you know, from our review and their information that they have shared with us, the only thing that was exposed was student names from that time period, no other identifying information, and there is no recommendation to do anything, but again, we just want, you know, trust with families is the most important thing we have, and so just to make people aware.
So that's a copy of the letter, that would go out to the hundred and forty families, so. Thank you, Mary. Is there any questions on that, or?
This happened seven years ago, you know, and it's not enforced today, so.
Well, it happened in November of last year.
But then they had the data, so the data we used, the product, seven years ago.
Oh, right, okay.
They had that sitting somewhere, and somebody in November accessed that.
It's a system we don't use anymore.
Right.
Haven't for a number of years.
For a seven, yeah, okay.
So there's truly people, alumni that are getting.
And all that was available was names, and that's it. There's no data, there's no birth dates, there's no social security numbers, just names. No addresses.
It doesn't even connect them to our school.
Doesn't even connect them to our school, but we still felt that, you know, with that information, we needed to reach out to these families and let them know.
And it helps us kind of, in all honesty, practice, too, about notifying people. I, as I said, I, I'm sorry to say this. I'm sure we will be doing this again.
Next item is policy. First reading, policy EBBC, emergency care and first aid. Did anybody get a chance to read over it? I do. Are we all set with it the way it is? Take a motion to approve. Steve? Sandra, second. All in favor? Three-zero. Thank you. First reading, policy EJC dash two, washing facilities policy. And again, did everybody get an opportunity to read through it? And as it looks good, take a motion to approve. Sandra? And a second? Steve? All in favor? Three-zero. Thank you. I'm not gonna read them through, but there is a number of policies that are on our agenda here. They were all reviewed by the policy committee with no recommended updates, so each one of them will be stamped with the date that they were just reviewed, so that they will fall in line that we're trying to review all the policies in a pre-year cycle, I believe that's it.
Yes.
So all of those will be stamped with the date the policy committee reviewed.
It was stimulating reading, right?
Quite a few, so.
There was quite a few.
And then the next item is privilege of the floor, number two. Anything from the floor? Nothing from the floor. Announcements, Tuesday, September third, our next of school board meeting here in the library. There will be policy review at five thirty, school board meeting at six thirty. And then Tuesday, October first, will be our next meeting after that. Policy review will be at five forty-five, school board meeting at six thirty. And then our November meeting is Tuesday, November fifth. Policy review at five forty-five, school board at six thirty. By the November one, the policy committee may be up to, up to possibly changing, 'cause we may have...
Yes.
Needs for time for budget.
Absolutely, I know, as I looked at that, so I think people are flexible on that end.
Yeah. Next item is non-public. Staff and student RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three, section two, AC. We're moving to non-public. They need a motion to move into non-public. Steve? And Sandra, second? And Sandra, do you wanna pull the board?
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.